Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Maureen Scallan-Faylor and I am president of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and I'd like to welcome you all here this morning. We have what I think is going to be a very informative program. As we all know, we have an upcoming election which involves all districts for the city council. And I would like to first thank all of you, our candidates, for taking time out this morning to come spend with us, to get to know the chamber as well as our members. As you all know, the success of Bloomington really depends on a successful business community. Woo! Yeah, it is. So, for you to come and take the time to share your thoughts, your priorities, and your platform for this upcoming election, we deeply appreciate your time. We all know you're very busy out there campaigning. Just so the group knows, we did invite all candidates to the forum. We did receive responses from all that they were coming, but we do have a couple of candidates that have not surfaced yet, so hopefully if they come, we'll just get them right into the fold and we'll go from there. I would like to take this time to acknowledge our sponsor for this morning's program.
Better not leave them.
No, don't leave them. You can't go get coffee. I'd like to introduce John Stanley and John Stanley is with Raymond James. And, John, would you just like to say a couple of words about your firm?
Yeah, Maureen told me this morning I had to say a couple of things. I grew up in Bloomington, moved away, as we often do, and then came back just a couple of years ago to help my folks get out of their house on the west side and get into seniors living. And so, to help them move, we said we'll buy the house, most of our plans. So now I'm back in Bloomington over on the west side. I work, my office is over on the east side in the old One Apple Three Square. For those of you who've been around long enough to remember when I had that address, it's now the River View Office Tower. And I've been in the investment business since starting with Payne-Weber back in 1980. Left Payne-Weber, went independent, working through Raymond James. And they handle all my securities business and everything for my clients and provide a variety of services, primarily investment, but after 30 years, you hopefully learn a few things and so we do a variety, provide a variety of services. But it's, we just run a kind of a slimmed-down, simple, kindler-gentler, if you will, practice and I'm really happy to be back in Bloomington and came to see the chamber a few years ago as a way of getting re-involved and it's been a good decision. Thank you.
Well, thank you, John, for your sponsorship and support for this program. This forum is put on by the Public Affairs Committee of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and we do have some of our members here in the room. Robert Freeman is our current chair, who will be leaving at the end of this year, and Robert is our new chair-elect for the Board of Directors. We have Orv Philbrandt, who is on the committee. Ken, Vingy, Ken, can you wave to everyone? Ken is a newly-elected board member to the chamber board and he will be taking over as chair for the Public Affairs Committee, so thank you very much. Chris Conera from Premier Bank also is on the committee. Tom Kendall is on the committee. Who else have I?
John.
Oh, well, and then of course John Stanley. I'd also like to recognize Mark Atkins, who is our current chair for the Board of Directors for the chamber, so thank you, Mark, for taking time. I am now going to introduce our moderator. I get to step in the back and be your little timekeeper. I'd like to introduce Robert Freeman. Robert is with Health Partners. He is a government relations specialist. So, Robert, do you want to come up and get us started?
Thank you, Maureen. Well, welcome, everyone. Thanks again to our sponsor, who ran away, I think, but he'll be back, so please feel free to thank him. Thanks very much. So, the way we want to do this is, first of all, we'd like to go, I think we'll go from my right to my left and have the candidates just introduce themselves and take maybe just two minutes or so to just say who they are and why they're running. So, thanks, if you'd like to start.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank the chamber for having this event. I'm Rick Bonin. I'm running for District One. I've lived in Bloomington my entire life, 37 years, love the city and I really want to be part of it. I want to help keep continuing running smooth. I'm a gas station owner. I own a couple of gas stations in South Minneapolis, a BP, and an ExxonMobil. Just recently, as of like two days ago, I'm president of Monoco Oil, which is actually a new brand development that is coming up here. Independents like myself that might be branded a Shell or a Mobil or a BP will be able to go to this independent brand and basically bypass oil companies and buy directly from the terminal. It's definitely a better deal and, Virg, you might appreciate the fact that we're doing it partially to get cheaper credit card fees. The interchange fees in retail gasoline are unbelievable to the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. That's it. I mean, other than that, if, I think that's it right now. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Dwayne?
Hi, my name's Dwayne Loman and I want to thank the chamber. I'm happy to be here this morning. I remember when I was just a little kid and my very first political campaign that I ever worked on was for Neil Peterson. I was folding little envelopes and putting them together and stuffing them indoors and ever since then, I thought, wow, that's a lot of work to kind of do that. Now I'm into doing the real thing and running for, running for office. And the reason why I decided to run, after talking with a number of leaders who were in the community, is I think it's important that we have a balance between high-quality service that we have in Bloomington and then also keeping our, continuing our legacy of fiscal management. We have a triple-A rating in the city of Bloomington and we want to keep that moving forward. Now, when I'm not out washing the twins or cooking food for my mom, who worked on HRA for a number of years for the city, I am working at now United Healthcare. I am a senior scheduling analyst for them. I run a call center there of about 200 folks there and that's helped me to kind of do some, I've done a number of other things in the community, worked for Habitat for Humanity, worked for the Minneapolis Consortium of Community Developers. So I'm happy here to discuss and talk about development issues and about how to make this city even better than it already is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Andrew?
Good morning. My name's Andrew Carlson. I'm running for Bloomington District Two. My wife, Kari, and I have been married for 11 years. We have two daughters, both attend Olson Elementary School. I received a bachelor's of science from Iowa State University and a master of business administration from the University of St. Thomas. In my professional career, I'm a project manager with a background in economic development and I currently serve as a commissioner on the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment My top priorities for the city, I wrote down three, and this may come up again in our conversation, but I'll touch on them briefly here. The first is to remain committed to providing high-quality city services by approving a balanced budget with an eye towards the future. I think we can't approach our budgets in a vacuum. We need to look at not only what our current needs are, but what our future needs are as well. And I think the chamber has a role to play in that. The second is to emphasize safe neighborhoods and schools to sustain our quality of life, but also our property values. It's a fact that good schools are an attraction to new families, so even for families without children in schools, we need to maintain them and provide them with the necessary resources they need. This will allow our children to achieve their goals and become Bloomington's future leaders. And third, I support Bloomington's development and redevelopment efforts. Bloomington is 95% developed, so when we talk development, we're really talking redevelopment and redevelopment is just inherently more complicated. So we need a well-informed council to help make those tough decisions. And I think so far, we're moving in the right directions with the plans we have in place. And I'll briefly conclude here by saying that as a District Two City Council member, I will be a friend and partner to the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We need to work together to promote our city as a first-class destination and a great place to do business.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm Cynthia Bemis Abrams and I'm running for the Bloomington City Council at Large and I'm a member of this chamber of commerce and I'm a very proud member of it as well. And I am just, I'm thrilled that this chamber is having this forum, but chambers have always had forums. This chamber is different because what I really believe is, when you look at the future vitality of the city of Bloomington, Maureen and Brad and Anna are very much a part of it because they are the connection to small business and small business is going to be what helps this city really steer into the future. I'm running for the Bloomington City Council at Large to fill the seat being vacated by Karen Nordstrom, who has served very well for two terms. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident. I have lived in every zip code in the city, which might not seem like it's that big of a deal, except that you really get to know the neighbors, you get to know the neighborhoods. And it's more than just door-knocking into those neighborhoods again. It's remembering what houses used to be or what businesses used to be in those neighborhoods, how those neighborhoods used to really interact with the little strip malls that served those 15 years ago, I served for one term on the Bloomington School Board, which was again a really fascinating education in terms of revisiting the school district that had raised me so well and has since raised my kids. Stepped back from the school board in order to raise those kids, take care of some frail parents, and here I am back with, as an empty nester, saying, I have time. Where can I commit? And it's public service. My membership is through my own business. I'm a public relations and leadership consultant and really believe that the networks that I have really begun to rebuild by virtue of membership in the chamber is going to be the key to my future success, as well as what I hope are some really great relationships with other local business owners. My platform, as it were, isn't so much a platform as it is sort of a mindset of where I see opportunities for the chamber, for the city, and the role of the city as a jobs creator is really that of recognizing that we are all in this together. We all want a stronger, more prosperous Bloomington. We all want balance of the neighborhoods with the retail districts. So we have to ask ourselves the questions every time we're making decisions and as we're talking to our professional staff about what is it that, why is it that people stay in Bloomington? Or like our sponsor, why would you return to Bloomington as opposed to having a choice to live in Edina or Eden Prairie? Why do people come to Bloomington in the first place? What is it that we provide them, either as a resident or as a visitor, that we do well, we know we need to continue to do well, and we need to perhaps even improve upon? And then finally, we also have to ask our question of our residents and our businesses, why do people leave? Why do they either leave temporarily for the day to go get a better cup of coffee and a better pastry item on a Saturday morning instead of staying in Bloomington? Or why do they choose to leave to go do business somewhere else? And are we asking those questions? Maybe we are, and I just have not had access to that information yet. But more importantly, I think when we get any of that sort of data and we need to understand what it is, then we're in the best position to act for the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Xavier?
Thank you. My name is Xavier Bickett and I'm a candidate for Bloomington City Council. I submitted my candidacy for at-large to be a voice and full of void of liberty on a council while offering less coercive and more voluntary solutions to city governance. Now, what does that mean for business owners? What does that mean for businesses in Bloomington? What I would like to see is to free up the marketplace so businesses can do what they do best and have the government focus on what the city does best. And it really does affect the businesses on a day-to-day operation when it comes to tax regulations and other kind of red tape. It really does, can provide a burden or hindrance to how businesses run in Bloomington. Personally, I, my education background, I have a business degree, a bachelor's degree from Minnesota School of Business, so I'm very familiar with how Rasmussen does business. I also was a college admissions representative, helping recent high school graduates get out into the workplace as a recruiter for high school students. And I also have a background as being a sales assistant for investment advisors at 360 Financial in Minnetonka. Currently, I work as an account manager at Asset Marketing Services, which is in Burnsville, and I work as an account manager in Numismatic Coins. What I would like to see for Bloomington, I was doing some research just on data and property taxes and something I brought up in recent forums and in the Bloomington League of Women Voters, is the property tax rates for Bloomington compared to other cities. And if you want to have some of that data I brought off, brought with me from the League of Minnesota Cities, I can share that with you and how Bloomington compares to neighboring cities. And I'll be around afterwards if you want to chat or ask questions more particular with me. Thank you for being here and being engaged.
Thank you. Great.
Good morning. My name's Jack Baloga. I am the incumbent in the third district and I am seeking reelection. I want to add my thanks to the chamber, its sponsor, and to all of its members who are present today for coming and being engaged in this process. I've made Bloomington my home for 27 years. I am a Minnesota native. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and business from the University of Minnesota. I am retired, following a successful career as a real estate developer and a small business owner. In addition to serving on the city council for the past two years, I have given more than 20 years of cumulative volunteer service to Bloomington, serving on many of its boards and commissions, and I did this in order to gain an in-depth knowledge and a better understanding of the city to enable me to serve its residents to the fullest extent. In 2000, I founded a nonprofit which enables the unemployed to find re-employment through networking. I have also served on the boards of many other nonprofits through the years. My vision for Bloomington is a high quality of life, good housing and jobs, superior educational opportunities, and outstanding city services at affordable costs. To achieve this vision, Bloomington will need knowledgeable and experienced leaders to execute its plans. Bloomington will continue to evolve and renew itself over the years and it must do this to remain a destination city. To do this, Bloomington will need experienced, knowledgeable, and effective city council members to ensure that all of the changes which will occur are required and desirable for the community. These policymakers must know and understand how the policies they enact will impact upon the residents and meet the needs of its both residents and businesses. I will continue to use the knowledge and experience as both a council member, volunteer to the city, and prior business experience to enable all of that. Again, thank you for coming.
Great. Ken?
Good morning. I normally don't get up this early, but I guess today is the exception. I'm looking out over the audience and I can recognize none of you live in East Bloomington. That's where I'm running, representing people who are not here. So, I, just on a personal note, my great-grandfather came from Sweden here in the 1800s and farmed over in Cahill. My grandfather, John Hedman, built one of the first churches here in Bloomington. I graduated from Richfield High School. I attended the Army as a combat engineer and then I went to the University of Minnesota and graduated from there. I've lived in Bloomington for 48 years. I've seen East Bloomington change a great deal. I've watched it, I guess you could say I'm the oldest neighbor in my neighborhood. Some things that have happened in East Bloomington are great. We're a very highly-integrated neighborhood. I don't see much integration in my audience. We are working people. I don't see too many dirty fingernails in my audience. I myself have spent my career in teaching and in manufacturing and presently have written and pursued two patents, one of which I had to carry to arbitration in which I won. I'm not a person who starts something he does not finish. My goal is to elevate East Bloomington. It is a depressed area in Bloomington. Housing prices are depressed. The people who move to Bloomington, East Bloomington, come because they can buy a house inexpensively. We are seeing many, many more people buying homes for investment purposes. Where East Bloomington goes, the rest of the city will follow. So, I'm running. The incumbent is retiring, Vern Wilcox, and I'm running in his place. A friend of mine who's passed away, Vern Hostetter, gave me a piece of advice that everyone should take. Vern was a good friend. Your greatest ability is availability. Make yourself available. Do things to help others. So, I'm running for public office. Oh, I need to get my composure, I'm sorry. The city government is important. We need to build a community. First off, we need to lower taxes. There's physical things that we can do to achieve ends, yes. Whoa, and that's why I'm here. I'd like to see lower taxes. I'd like to see better services for East Bloomington. We have an elderly population and I would like to see community centers built where the population is and not in West Bloomington, as has been proposed.
Okay. I think we'll be able to get into more specifics in the later questions, too.
Well, I think I have to wrap it up. But anyways, I, yeah.
That would be great.
I want to thank you for allowing me to come. If I would have known there was a dress code, I do own a suit.
All right. Last but not least, John?
Thank you. John Olson, I'm running for the seat on the city council that is in the northeast part of the city, District Four. Born in Iowa, only lived there three years, didn't know the difference between a hot tie and a gopher, so I adjusted well into Minnesota for the rest of my life. I've been very involved in a lot of activities, jobs. As a little kid, as a seventh grader, I think, I don't remember what I got paid, it would be a sob story, I'm sure that my grandkids wouldn't care about, but pulling weeds in a bean field. Worked for a potato farmer for three years, rural electrical cooperatives, these are all part-time jobs. Later on, when I became a teacher, I was a milkman and so forth. I've done a lot of different things and I think that's significant because when I became a manager type as a principal in schools, I had an understanding of how things happen from the ground up. And I think the most successful leaders are those who understand what happens at that level. I started my professional career in Duluth as a youth director for three churches in a depressed area of the city, economic depressed area. Became a teacher, which was my original plan, and I was a teacher for 23 years and administrator for 10. I formed, after retiring from public education, I formed a conflict management business as an LLC, became a member of this chamber at that point, and have been involved in the city in quite a variety of ways. I volunteer on a regular basis through the chamber's community outreach committee and have been very active in my church. I've been a mentor for sixth-grade students at Valley View. I've been involved in Rotary and on the Bloomington United for Youth Board. And of course, most recently, for the last five years, I've been a member of the Planning Commission, where I've learned a lot about how the city operates and a lot of the issues that come before the chamber, or the, excuse me, the city council. Issues as we move forward, we need to plan the future as well as resolve problems that come in front of us. And I'm just going to use one example in terms of different types of people that we need to serve. Millennials and baby boomers have different interests and needs in transportation, in housing, and we need to be responsive to all of those. In terms of transportation, the Minneapolis-area chamber, of which this chamber is a part, has been very active in working toward the congestion that's on our freeways. And one of the ways, of course, is to encourage mass transportation. The millennials like to, some of them don't even want to have cars, and so we're moving into an area that we need to be thoughtful about what we plan in that regard. Jobs, we need to, as I go door-to-door, and I'm sure many of you, Hannah, as you do that, are finding that there are many stories out there about people losing jobs in a great recession and not necessarily being trained and ready for what's available now. I want to work with the business community to help with that. Housing, as Ken indicated, we are the oldest part of the city, which ends up meaning that the housing stock is, I want to say a hats off to those who have been working to keep their homes up and that kind of thing, but we need to be doing programs like the loan program that we already have. The role of government is about relationships and so building relationships with people who can help District Four is important to me and I believe I've already developed those kinds of relationships pretty well. So I look forward to serving the people of the city, but in particular District Four, and thanks for having us.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, thank you for those opening statements. I'm going to start again at Richard's end, because it's been a while since he got to talk. And I'll start with the first question on my list. We have two questions, so if you, maybe you spend a couple of minutes and just focus on yourselves, not your opponent, if you would. And so, the first question we have is, what do you see as number one priority for the city of Bloomington? And if you're elected as council member or re-elected, how would you ensure that that happens?
Right now, I would think that the most important thing is to make sure that the projects we have going right now, whether it's Penn American or the mall development, go smooth. I think that we want a good transition. Doing that, I think we want to make sure that the traffic moves smooth and the infrastructure is adequate to handle the increased traffic. Another thing that I would like to see, and I think that's going to be coming down the pipeline for those of you that actually, that have morning rush hour traffic, that 494 35W corridor is horrible, for lack of a better word, and I think that that's something that, I'm sure there's other government agencies that are going to be involved with that, but I would definitely encourage that to be developed in a manner that actually can handle the traffic. Right now, I think it's lacking. Those are a few things. Other than that, I mean, I think that the city is overall ran very well. I think that our roads are in good condition and they are continuing to be in good condition with the services and stuff that we have. Also, the police fire is also in very good condition. But that's basically my main thing, is just to make sure that the city continues running smooth and I'd like to be a part of the decision-making. Thank you.
All right. Great.
So, the number one issue in the city of Bloomington, as far as I see it, is we need to be focused on finding new ways in which that we can, in a sense, draw upon our great strength. We're becoming a city, and we have been a city, of diverse We're becoming a city, and we have been a city, of diverse thought and diverse way of looking at things. No matter how we look, we have a, we've always had a tradition of diversity here in the city. And I think we need to harness that and be able to get more people involved in our government and find innovative ways of doing that. And that will help us. And it was wonderful when I saw that survey come out. It's just what I've seen, what I've knocked on doors. People saying to me, yeah, Bloomington is a great place to live. It's a great place to be from. As I grew up here all my life, except for going to college and do my Rotary Scholarship over in Sweden. Those were the only times I was away from Bloomington. And that's the one thing I like about that. But we can't rest. We can't say, we can't just say, you know what, we're okay with the way things are now. Because when we do that, that's when we fall behind. And so, that's what I would do, is focus on ways in which, at the council level, that we can find innovative ways in which, and we already do a great job of it now, of getting people involved, but find even more ways in which that we can get more citizens involved in our public decisions as much as we possibly can. And that's what I would focus on. And I also think that helps us to make decisions and get things done quicker within city government. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, this gets back to my opening comments on my three priorities. I probably would add a fourth as well, but we've heard this repeatedly on the focusing on your strengths, and that is centered around the city's ability to deliver services. It's no accident that residents consistently rank Bloomington for providing high-quality services and for its strong fiscal health. I'll read a quick sentence here for you. "These high rankings are the results we have come to expect. We expect the delivery of high-quality services from a well-trained and professionally managed workforce." Training is important, and that must continue to be a part of the city's budget so that we can attract high-qualified employees for our city, as well as managers. The next is this idea of safe neighborhoods and schools. That has to be not only in the city's annual work plan, but also be reflected in its budget. And next, I'm going to tie that in with the housing piece. The idea of providing housing choice, the fact that people can go from raising a family to retiring here in Bloomington. I think the more residents that we can retain, the better. And that's a quick lead-in to the business side. We talk a lot about business retention and attraction. Eighty percent is going to come from retaining the businesses we have. The example I like to give is with the Toro expansion. Toro is an international company. They could have gone anywhere. They chose to expand here. That's wonderful. Those are high-paying jobs. We also benefit from our neighbors, such as Richfield, with attracting Best Buy. Most, some of those employees probably live and shop here in Bloomington, so that's great. We need to compete with those other communities, but we also need to work in conjunction with them as well.
Thank you very much.
In terms of the number one priority, which is the way you asked the question, for the next few years, I believe it should be leveraging the amount of activity that we have going on, on the east side, in order so that it penetrates to the neighborhood level in a very positive way. This is our opportunity, as someone on this end was talking about, that in East Bloomington, we have a tremendous asset of affordable housing. Younger families, singles, young married couples would love to move into East Bloomington and perhaps pay a higher dollar for a better parcel if there's a sense that it's a little bit like Richfield and it's a little bit like South Minneapolis. But right now, it's sort of this, it's a neglected side of a suburb. We have Old Cedar Bridge coming in. What an opportunity for a redevelopment, redevelopment of the Old Cedar Avenue and Old Shakopee Road intersection. There's no reason that that should not become a hub for millennials, exers, and hipsters, and anybody else who wants to come and have wine, or coffee, or a scone. We need to be thinking, to use a hockey metaphor, we need to be moving to where the puck is, not necessarily where it just was. So, East Bloomington is our opportunity. Based on Mall Phase Two, the mall that we have today, and all of the activity going on on American Boulevard, this is the really ripe opportunity to step in, work with homeowners, help older homeowners move their house on to the next owner, and ensure that whoever those next owners are are looking at a piece of property, that they aren't just selling off to an investor, but rather, they are in it for the long haul. They're in it with their kids, and they're here to stay.
All right. Sylvia?
Thank you. So, the number one priority affecting Bloomington moving forward, the League of Women Voters asked the same question, and so did the Sun Current in the recent article that came out. And my answer is the same. It's going to be jobs. One thing I looked at for CNN Money Magazine's Best Cities to Live In in America, they had top 100 cities to live in in America, and five of them were out of Minnesota, and all of them were in the top 25. And when I did, as I compared what makes them in that top 25, I noticed all of them had double-digit job growth, except for Eagan, which I think was negative 1% from 2000 into 2011. And I know some people say, well, there was a recession during that time, right? So, Bloomington's developed, we're not going to have this job growth. But when I look at the surrounding cities achieving job growth, I don't see why Bloomington can't as well. In the recent 2013 residents survey, the residents tell us what is important to them. Some of the least ratings that were received were affordable healthcare and affordable housing, also ease of bus travel in Bloomington. But when it comes to the Chamber of Commerce, I'm looking at affordable healthcare, affordable housing, I think if we have job growth that has quality jobs, people are going to be able to afford these things. And they're not going to have the struggle of finding affordable housing and finding affordable healthcare with job growth. One thing I was looking at with tax rates off the League of Minnesota Cities, which is, you can easily find, I was looking at Eden Prairie from 2013. We can just use a $250,000 value. Twenty-six percent higher than Eden Prairie, Bloomington is. Sixty-two percent higher than Edina. We're doing better than Richfield and St. Paul. Eagan, double digits higher than Bloomington. Or Bloomington's double-digit higher for property taxes than Eagan. Now, property tax isn't the only thing. It's just one piece of the puzzle, I understand that. And when companies are looking for cities to move in, it's not the only thing. They're looking at strengths of the community. When I was working at 360 Financial in Minnetaka, I was on the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, or Twin West Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. And what the business owners were telling me is they want to have things that they can expect from government. They don't want this uncertainty, and that's what's preventing them from hiring, is uncertainty. And I think on the city level, one thing that we can do is when we free up the marketplace, they're not as worried about what is the city going to do? What regulations are they going to pass that are going to prevent us from doing business? And I think that's something that the council should look at moving forward to help with the number one priority, which I do think is jobs. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Jake?
Thank you. The question was, is what's the number one priority for the city of Bloomington?
And how would you ensure that happens?
And the, at the city level, one of the great things is, is that you really provide some of the most basic and fundamental services that any resident receives from any level of government. Public safety, police, fire, EMS, roads and streets. We're really more in contact with our citizenry than any other form of government is as we provide those basic needs to both the residents and the businesses. I believe that that is, and will continue to be, the number one priority. Slightly below that, we have great opportunities to make a lot of impacts. It's been spoken to about housing and the aging housing stock within the eastern part of the city. We made an initiative in the 2013 budget to increase, substantially increase, the amount of funds that the HRA has available for low-cost loans to improve that housing stock. We will continue to do that, and those are the kinds of outreaches that cities should and need to continue to make. We will continue with the redevelopment that we have in the three districts. South Loop, which includes the Mall of America, Penn and American Boulevard, and Normandale Lakes. Those redevelopment districts have been slowed by the Great Recession, but they are starting to show signs of life and are coming on strong. In the last six months, we have approved, and the city has encouraged, development in each one of those districts, and you will see the fruits of that coming out of the ground in the next year. To have that vitality is exceptionally important because we must have both strong residential and strong commercial basis in order for this city to be a viable entity going forward.
All right. Thank you very much. Ken?
I think the number one issue for people in East Bloomington is taxes. They have no disposable income. They cannot maintain their property, and we keep taxing the hell out of them, basically. And as far as families, young families moving into East Bloomington, young families usually mean children. Children mean schools, and all those elementary schools have been removed from East Bloomington. So, we have no incentive. There's parks have been, parts of the parks have been sold off, and other parts of the park are used for landfill. So, who's going to move into East Bloomington? You wonder why housing prices are depressed? In the Bloomington briefing, there was an interesting thing. It was a graph, and it says here at the top of it, it says, "City property tax on medium-valued, median," and I need to express that, "median-valued single-family homes." It was comparing the cost of city services for several cities around here, and I picked out the two top, most expensive, and of course, Bloomington. In Edina, the median value home is $396,550. In Eden Prairie, it's $312,600. In Bloomington, it's $194,000. So, the graph doesn't compare apples to apples. The graph is distorted. The true graph is here. This is what we're paying for city services. Edina is paying $46.48 a month. We are paying $67.82 a month. So, we're just, the city government in Bloomington is extremely expensive. You're taking the disposable income away from the people. Disposable income is what makes, generates a lot of restaurants and businesses. Now, when you introduce yourself, most of you are involved in finance. And when you go out and look for someplace to put money, you look for a profitable area. It's interesting that in Bloomington, 70% of the people who work for the city live elsewhere. They choose to live elsewhere. That does not say much for the city of Bloomington, nor the cost of living in Bloomington. We are not a, we are slowly going downhill. We are roding. We need to lower taxes. Remember, property tax, 60% of it goes to the state. And if you know from business experience, if you give 60% of your income away to somebody else, you're not going to do well in business, right? You want to keep it all, and the only way you can keep it all is to lower taxes. So, we should be seeking out a means of lowering the tax in Bloomington. And if you want to see development, give people money to spend.
All right. Thank you very much. And John?
Number one priority for me is that we need to keep the city council in a nonpartisan mode. We don't identify by party on the ballot, but sometimes we do get into partisan kinds of battles. And that's not good for Bloomington. So, we need to problem-solve, as I said earlier. We need to problem-solve whatever the issues are that confront us, and we need to plan the future in a manner that's what's right for Bloomington. And yes, as a council representative for the fourth district, that'll be my priority, but I certainly will be aware that what's healthy for the whole city is ultimately healthy also for District Four. Everything else falls into place. We get a budget that works. We end up getting programs that are quality. I believe in the concept of zero-based budgeting for programs, that all programs need to be looked at on a regular basis to make sure that they're doing what we intend them to do, that they are, in fact, the priorities we need for our city.
All right. Thank you. I think this time we're going to start at John, we'll go back to Richard, just so everybody gets to mix around the order. I guess the middle people don't really get to change, so it's not that much, sorry. So, I'd just like to remind people to just try and keep their answers to a couple of minutes so that we have some time for questions from the audience at the end, too. So, Bloomington's expected to grow substantially over the next two decades, as some of you have already mentioned. That's obviously a lot, you know, that's a key priority for the Chamber of Commerce. How would you, as a council member, support this economic development? And, John?
Well, our economic development, obviously, is centered in many respects in terms of the business community. And as I indicated in my opening comment, it's important that jobs are created, that we have a training program. I think I have a background in education, Rasmusson is here. That we need to be encouraging, fostering, supporting, creating dialogue to make that relationship work. When businesses are doing well, in part because they have a good-trained workforce, it does wonderful things for the business, but it also does wonderful things for the community. And I believe that the outcome of that will end up being that the sense of community is fostered by businesses. We have wonderful businesses in the city of Bloomington that have a responsibility, demonstrate a responsibility for the city, and that's great. We can build on that.
All right. Ken?
Oh. Economic development. Taxes are a big part of economic development. They always are. You know that the higher your costs are, the less profit you make, right? It's pretty simple. I've been in business for 40 years. I presently run an internet business where I sell worldwide. We had to modify our products in order to ship overseas when the recession came here. So, we cut the weight and cut the shipping costs and expanded our overseas market, and our company is doing well. We adapted to the situation. We do, it's surprising on the internet business, this, because you figuratively do not have a fixed place, okay? A brick-and-mortar store. You're in cyberspace, and so, you don't pay sales tax. It is interesting that we receive very few purchases from Minnesota where we have to pay seven, what, and a half percent sales tax. Most of our sales come from outside of the state where they don't have to pay sales tax. So, that is an indicator of how important taxes are to businesses. And we need to lower the taxes. Plus, we could look at businesses, enticing businesses that manufacture, because manufacturing businesses pull money from outside the state into the state, into the community. That builds out the number, the amount of resources the community has to redevelop and expand. I think you all understand what I'm saying, because most of you are in economics. I may not be able to use your terms, but we understand what we're talking about. We want profit, right? We want our businesses to be profitable. Profitable business expands. So, but anyways, that would be, I think, the, what we need for economic development is we need to lower our taxes, lower the cost of government, and therefore, increase the amount that families have as disposable income and increase the profitability of running a business in Bloomington.
Okay. Jake? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bloomington is going to...
Bloomington is going to grow, and recently the Met Council indicated that Bloomington is expected to grow to a population of 130,000 by the year 2040. If we look at today's current population, that's a growth of 34,000 people over that time. This growth will come in a number of different ways. It'll come through organic growth and through redevelopment opportunities. I call organic growth the growth that, when we have the turn of housing stock, going from a single person who gets to move to a senior housing development, and that house is reoccupied by a family, that population will increase the average number of occupants per household. We have seen that decline over the past decade and a half, and it's starting to turn and will continue to turn. Senior housing is important to Bloomington, as we have one of the most aged populations in the city, and we're addressing that. We have addressed it in a number of ways and continue to do so. An example of that would be the Applewood Development Project that is proposed to go on Old Chocopee near France. I support those and will continue to support those when the location is appropriate for that type of development. With respects to redevelopment, each of our redevelopment projects that we have, South Loop, Penn and American, Normandale Lakes, contains a mix of housing, retail, and commercial office space. These districts are important to the city because they leverage public investment that has already been made in each of those areas. It does in terms of basic infrastructure, water sewer, streets and roads, and in the case of South Loop, the LRT, which is the great, one of the greatest assets of that development district. The housing there will continue to grow and be a more important mix in each one of those We have great redevelopment opportunities, and we will continue to leverage them by, when appropriate, changing the comprehensive plan, changing zoning, and working with developers to the extent that's reasonable and services the needs of both the residents and businesses of the city.
Thank you.
Can you, would you mind just repeating the question one more time?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Bloomington's expected to grow substantially over the next two decades. How will you, as a council member, support this economic development?
Okay. This topic was brought up at the last forum as well, League of Women Voters, about the growth of Bloomington and the population growth, and there was a little bit of confusion, I remember, on the council, for the candidates for city council on the forum last time about what that growth is going to be, is there going to be growth? And that night later on, I went back to the email I received from the Met Council that I subscribe to, and they said, I did share out the rest of the candidates, so we should all be on the same page right now, I think. Okay? Good?
I'm sure we all agree on everything. That's the impression I'm getting.
But just reviewing the numbers that Jack put down, they gave a range out of 2040. It was part of the Thrive Plan. For me, on the city council, what can the city council do to foster growth? One thing I think that the city council can do is get out of the way of businesses developing. One of the things that I would not be an advocate for is tax subsidies for private business. One of the parts with me is offering voluntary solutions to governments. I'm not going to be a council member that businesses can come to and say, hey, we want to care it for developing here, we want to care it for developing here, we want tax incentives for developing there. I'm very wary of city government picking and choosing which areas they want to develop for which businesses. It's something I'm very wary of, where you get into picking favoritism among businesses in Bloomington. So I will not be a city council member that businesses can come to and say, we want special deals here, we want special deals there. I'm very wary of that. I was looking at the growth from, on our economic growth, and I see that the Mall of America, you know, was, it's 10% of our tax base here, and one thing that I wouldn't necessarily have agreed with is how we're funding the Mall of America expansion. I know there was some confusion last night at the city council study session on, are the parking lots city property, or are they Mall of America property? And I was just, how do we not know this? Like, how do we, is, how is this, you know, when did this change happen? I was asking today some of the council members, when did this change happen? And there wasn't a real clear consensus on when this was going, you know, when did the parking lots become property of the Mall of America? When was it property of Bloomington? So it worried me a little bit, because I don't, I don't mind the Mall of America developing, but when you're using tax dollars for private business, I'm just very wary of that. I don't want to take advantage of taxpayers for private business, and I'll just stop there so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. The, how can the city council, or how can I, as a city council member, support that economic development? That economic development should be coming on the heels of a lot of planned development for the residential side of this population growth. So with that in mind, and this being a highly collaborative community, I guess I would see, first of all, that it shouldn't take the city by surprise that economic development is falling in place with residential development, and in fact, it's all sort of that larger, long-term planning, stable building process that we are known for in the city. It requires balance, it requires an understanding of how any new development fits in with the existing neighborhood, and that they coalesce both visually as well as culturally as to whatever the unique character of that neighborhood is. That requires a lot of outreach, it requires engagement, not just of the city council members with the residents, but also the economic development interests as well. So the fact that we've got some tremendous relationships with our nonprofit communities, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, everybody talks to each other. And they talk to each other, and they trust each other, because ultimately, we are all in this. We could all be making a lot more money in the real private sector, but we're all in this because we care so much about Bloomington and its future. So I guess I really believe that through the amount of transparency that people expect today, that they understand what's coming, and that we are using the best of the private sector to make the most of every infrastructure improvement, as Jack said, every decision that the city has to make by virtue of its core service delivery is being reflected then in the promise and the future and the prosperity of tomorrow.
Thank you. Economic development. Well, I believe Bloomington is well-positioned for this future projected growth. I think it's no surprise that we are a city that will be accepting and be ready for this future development. Geographically speaking, we are well-positioned, sitting between two interstate highways, the airport, the existence of transit options, like rail was mentioned before, probably more on the way. So we are clearly a part of the state's economic engine, and we help fuel the state's economy. So that is our legacy, that's our destiny, and how we approach growth is up to us. And that leadership needs to come through the city council. Surprises do occur in life, and it's going to be how you address those surprises that are going to be a indicator as to how successful this coming council is. But we do have a strong basis in which to base those decisions, with the plans that are already in place. We heard mentioned the idea of looking at our land use and zoning policies. Do they need to be updated? We also have a treasure chest of community assets. Where do we stand as a community with our parks, our open space? Do we preserve them, or do we set them aside for future development as well? I would say we want to keep them. Let's preserve them for future generations. Also, what that then means is, we need to talk about density in a real way. What does density mean for Bloomington? We talked a lot about South Loop and making that more of an urban type of development. That doesn't mean it has to come with the negatives that are associated with urban development. We can incorporate all the positives as well. So I'm excited about this projected future growth. I hope you all are, too. I think with the right plans in place and the right leadership in place, it can make for a really bright future.
Thank you very much.
Growth. You know, when I think about growth, it makes me think about when I was a little kid. What I used to do is I used to have little matchbox cars in the backyard, and I used to make my own city in the backyard. Boy, was it great when I was a kid. I could do whatever I want. There's no taxes. I could do whatever I want. There's no zoning codes, there's no ordinances. I could keep my RV anywhere I want in those little streets. I could pile them up. Man, was that great. Then my friend came over, then he had all these rules about what he wanted to do. I'm like, oh, come on, guys. Let's do it my way. Then I had to work with them. Well, you know, that's what we've got to do in the city. You know, we are going to grow. When we look back at our history, back in 1818, of what people found great about this city, was about how it was a growth area, it was a beautiful land, and Native Americans were here, too, as well. Some of my background folks that grew up in this area, too, and we had to work together. And I think that's what we're going to have to do when we have this growth, when we get to 100, 130,000 people. And that means that we're going to have to examine some of the ways in which we do things. We're going to need to look at the way we do our housing in the east side of Bloomington, continuing those loans. We may need to take additional steps beyond what we're doing with our loan program to help build up our housing stock. That means that we've got to make sure that our public services are supported, the police and fire, so that we're ready for these challenges. You know, our city is going to change in terms of its diversity. We've got to be able to be prepared and be ready for when different cultures come in to our city and that kind of thing. But you know what, though? I'm not afraid. We've got a wonderful base here in this city. We've got the Chamber of Commerce working together. It's not just government. We've got the chamber, we've got nonprofit organizations like Veep that are involved. And we, as a team, as a team effort, we will work together to meet this challenge, this exciting opportunity of growth. I'm looking forward to it. And I know that my predecessor, Steve Peterson, did a wonderful job. Neil Peterson, the mayor, former mayor, they have set us with a wonderful track record. Isn't that wonderful, that we have a triple-A rating in this city? So we are financially poised and ready, from an economic standpoint, to be able to take this next step for growth. And I hope that we have more than 130,000 people here in a quicker period of time. That means that's more customers for us to be able to deal with. And so we just need to keep moving forward, and that's what I'd like to do as a city council member from District One. Thank you.
All right. Rick.
Well, I think there's been a lot of good points that have been made here, and I think that I just want to add to a few of them. One thing that I want to make sure our city government does is it's lined up with all the other entities. There's nothing worse than when you talk to one entity of government, and then there's another entity that's preventing you from doing something. I get that a lot in my retail business over in Minneapolis. One thing I see Minneapolis and Richfield doing, though, is, there's been a lot of talk here about the east side and how we want to develop that, you know, and I think that we do want to encourage development at all price points, not just necessarily the big mall project in the Penn American, but the guy that wants to spend 50 grand to add on a room to his house. I want to make sure that that gets done, too. We're trying to attract younger families because we are an aging community. I think that we might have to, there's one that I've heard a lot, and there's a garage ordinance in Bloomington, and there's a lot of people that really want to add on to their garage. Now, in East Bloomington, garage life is almost a culture. I mean, there's a lot of people that hang out in the garage, watch Vikings games, they tinker with cars, they do a lot of things. A lot of people want to add on to their garage, and there's a, there's an ordinance that somehow it's related to the square footage of their house, and there's some obstacles there. I think if we're going to want to bring younger families in here and develop the east side of Bloomington, I think we want to maybe loosen a little bit of those ordinances and make it a little bit easier. I look at Richfield, I look at Minneapolis, and there are people cutting the tops of their house and putting second floors on like crazy. And I think it's that kind of development in East Bloomington that's really going to help our city grow. So in part, I just want to make sure that all areas of government are working together for the common goal. Thanks.
All right. I think Maureen had a question. She wanted to ask the candidates.
I have one question, and it is just a yes or no, so we can go real quickly, and then we will open it up for maybe one or two questions. Could each of you answer yes or no if you will be supporting the referendum that will be on the ballot for safe and innovative schools?
Yes. Yes.
Just yes or no?
Yes or no?
Can you do that? Yes.
Yes.
No.
Absolutely, yes. No?
Yes.
All right, very good. That was painless. Okay, so what we'd like to do is, we didn't get any questions submitted at the front, but if folks have questions for the candidates, maybe we can, if you live in that area or you work in that area, you can ask a question and direct us to the pair of candidates. So stick your hand up if you want to ask a question. Yes, esteemed sponsor. And who do you want to, who do you want to address your, who do you want to address your questions?
I would like to address my question to both Ken and John. Working on the east side and living on the west side, I noticed the, a lot of differences. Looking around the room, I'm guessing we don't have a lot of eastsiders in the room, in the audience. Part of the problem, it seems to me, with the development of the east side is, in part because of the change over the 40 years since I first lived here, in the makeup of the east side, how you get the east side residents and businesses more involved than I think they are in the processes that affect them. Ken?
Well, one of the things that I would like to see is a seniors' center in East Bloomington where the seniors live. I think that we might find space at the Portland, what used to be the Portland Junior Eye. There might be space, so we could put a seniors' center. That would bring at least part of the community together. That is one of the goals I'm having, I'm trying to do, is trying to get more people voting in East Bloomington. We have a very poor voter turnout. And so I'm trying to stick up for their side.
John?
As I go about and have lived in the area and interacted with people, quite a few who go to my church, the church that I share with them, talk about what's going on in their neighborhoods. And I've begun talking to some of the captains for Neighborhood Watch about, if elected, I would very much like to make myself available once a year to every, every community neighborhood that would like to talk, because I see a lot of great things. On my website, I have some pictures, the day after the, was it August 13th storm, the hailstorm, I drove around, took some pictures, talked to quite a few people, and the really neat thing was that there were people helping people a lot. And I think that there's some, when we end up saying that District Four is kind of a depressed area economically, it's by definition that homes were built in the 50s by the, for the most part, and so they wear out. And as I said in my opening comment, hats off to those people who have worked to keep their homes up. You can go into virtually any street, and you'll find some homes that really stand out, the yards are kept well and so forth. So the core values and the talents and so forth attitudes of the people in District Four, there's a lot of great people that we can work with as a city council, I as a city council member for them, to build up who we are. And from that attitude, end up doing some planning about what would we like to do. Some of the economic, or some of the businesses are also very economically depressed. I mean, they just don't attract people in. And so I think working with, maybe it's time to have an east side or a District Four Business Association or something like that, I don't know. Can work with the chamber to find out how many are members, and maybe start from that point, and encourage more growth, whether it becomes a subgroup of this chamber or not. But both with residents and with businesses, there's a lot we can do because there's some great people out there that we can work with.
Thank you. Anybody else want to ask the candidates a question? Really? Oh, do you have another question, John? Your sponsor.
I'll address this to Jack, since he's my representative on the council. You've been on the council for how long now?
Two years. Elected in 2011, began serving in January of '12.
All right, ask a question. Good answer.
Since coming on the council, has there been anything that you've found? Since coming on the council, has there been anything that you've found yourself more at odds with than, than other, I mean, we've, we've been accused at times of having a fairly homogenous council in some respects. Are you, is there anything that you just, any issue where you differ greatly, or where you're at odds with the most of the, rest of the council?
Well, a difficult question to answer, because I think at times, there are individual items that some of the council members see differently than some of the others. But generally, there's unanimity that we're all there to serve the good of those people who elected us to office. We are working with, you know, the umbrellas of the comprehensive plan and the redevelopment districts and those sort of things. And we generally are making progress. This is not Washington, where we're deadlocked. We continue to push forward on the issues, the, the difficult ones and the easy ones together. So while there are normally, it, it seems to be like a five to two vote in, in some of the more contentious issues, more often than not, you will find that the vote is 7-0. So I think we have a good working relationship in the existing council, and hope that with the new members coming on, we can continue to have that kind of cooperation, understanding, and cordial nature between members. Did that respond to your question?
I was just curious as to whether there's anything you ever found yourself in, let's say in that five-two vote, we ever won the two?
I can't think of a particular item. I imagine there has been at, at a time. But for instance, for, one of the more difficult things that we have recently done is, is the Old Cedar Avenue Bridge. That's been before council for, since the state has bequeathed that to the city. And it's to the point where I think council had unanimity, 7-0, to continue to seek a reconstruction, a new bridge, because of the cost and that we couldn't find cost-sharing partners with others, to the extent that the majority of the costs wouldn't flow to the city, residents and businesses. That changed in the most recent legislation, where the state gave to the city $9 million of its tax dollars back, taking that out of TIF.
Fiscal disparities.
Excuse me, thank you, fiscal disparities. It's a difficult kind of a situation, because when you look at it and find that there is an opportunity to spend $5, $6 million for a crossing that's new, and then to look at an alternative that might be twice that, then you begin to weigh the other factors, the other factors being that the federal highway transportation services said that, and to frame it, they needed to approve the various options. And when they came back with this very clearly and simply worded letter that said, you had no options, we will not approve a new structure. To continue to serve, it made it quite clear to me that a renovation was the only option. There's historic value in there. Different people place different values on what historic items should be. But when I looked at it in totality, I supported that and changed my position from the new to the renovated, based upon what the circumstances were at the time. So again, it passed, and we had the same collegial kind of reaction.
Thanks. Any other question?
I have a variety of questions, we don't have time to answer, but I'd be interested to know, well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for lining yourselves up and for public service, running a campaign, takes away from your families, your personal time. I personally think not enough people in our community think enough about public service to, to own up to the responsibility and run broad. So I appreciate you guys doing what you're doing. And it's amazing to me to listen to the variety of discourse between all of you, the personality and the viewpoint differences. My question, I guess, more than anything else, this is the first time I've been introduced to a lot of you, what is the number one qualification, and just one, each of you feel like you have in, in, in having a voice in our community, in being an elected council member? And why don't we start in the middle?
I'm going to interrupt this up by 28 minutes of talk, so let's keep it on its quality.
Yeah, maybe we can just kind of keep it simple and short.
Thirty seconds.
Because so many people know me from a life of living in a very active way in this community, I believe I have high integrity.
Right. Xavier?
I, thanks for the question. I think one of my greatest attributes is finding what people agree upon and focusing on where we can move forward, on where we agree, and really tabling things we don't necessarily agree upon, so we can focus on the positives. I think, I think I bring a good ability for people to, to work together in moving forward on where we agree, not necessarily fighting necessarily on what we disagree about.
Richard?
Hands down, street smarts. In the retail gasoline industry, you deal with every demographic of person, every economic difference. I've repo'd cars in North Minneapolis, you know, so I would definitely say hands down, street smarts.
Right.
Human relations. I've had the opportunity to work within government, several years there, within nonprofit, and also now in business. I've got a diversity of experience, working with diversity and a group of different people from different age groups, different socioeconomic backgrounds, business owners, churches, all across the, the spectrum. So I would say that, that what I bring from a talent level is the ability to, to relate with human beings, wherever they come from.
Andrew?
Oh, boy. I have a, a passion for, for community service. I would also say that I have a true desire. I actually enjoy going out and knocking on a stranger's door, believe it or not. If I wasn't doing this, I would probably be in sales. But that's not my, that is not my skill set. My, my strengths are really in, in the government sector, in the economic development sector. And I want to focus on what I feel I do best, which is to serve people, service.
All right. Let's go all the way down to John.
The ability to work, excuse me, productively with a wide variety of different personalities, backgrounds, perspectives on things. And I'm sorry, but my rest of my 30 seconds. My most recent grandson was born September 22nd, and I have to make comment about my wife Sandy, who is very important to me, obviously. Family is really what drives me, and the fact that my grandchildren and anybody else's grandchildren, that's, that's my perspective on what I do.
Ken?
I think my strongest intellectual asset is problem analysis. That's why I'm an inventor, that's why I write patents. I can look at a problem and tear it apart and pick out those pieces that need to be repaired, repaired and directed in the direction it should go. And that's, I don't know, my father was an inventor, I'm an inventor.
All right. And last but not least, Jack?
Thank you. Well, Tom, you, you thanked all of us for our service and want to recognize your service for creating Heritage Days. What a great event to celebrate Bloomington's history. Thanks for doing that. One, one of the, the, the strength I bring is, is my passion for service and the ability to get things done. Tom asked that question, and we share a background in commercial real estate and development. And Tom knows that until you can move things, until you can get things done, until you can work through the myriad of problems, nothing happens. And that's what needs to happen. That's how government serves its constituents, and that's what I bring to the table as my strength.
All right, well, thank you. Well, I think we're almost out of time here, so I think we're just going to wrap it up. I want to take the chance to thank everyone who was here today, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking to us and sharing your, your vision, and encourage you to, if, you know, if you succeed, that's great, we look forward to working with you. If you're unsuccessful, then we still look forward to working with you, we hope you enrage, you remain engaged in the community, and hope to see you at other gatherings. And thanks very much. So if you're joining me, give him a big hand for all of our members. [applause]